All right, I have 6:30. Iowa called to order a meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. It's Thursday, May 17th, 2022. Roll call of members, please, Laura.
Counselor Sephavi is absent. Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon is absent. Counselor Blum?
Here.
We can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we have on our agenda is a happy, well, sort of happy and not happy. It's happy and sad, sweet and sour, happy and sad. Actually, it's a happy time. It's a happy time for Jessica Sager, our finance director, who will be leaving us and moving back to Iowa, Illinois. So today we say, tonight we say farewell to Jessica Sager, the Director of Finance and Administration, and the editor of our village crier, excellent editor, I might add. I've been working with her for a couple of years now at that job. Oh, she's an excellent finance administration director, too. She's been a part of almost all of our operations. She's involved in everything we do. She began employment here in July 2005 as a police records clerk. A few years later, she moved over to the municipal court clerk until June 2014, when she transferred to accounting clerk. And I think people often say that Jessica ran the city single-handedly, and that's probably a little overstimulated, but not much. During her time winning over court defendants with her infectious laughter. She was the first court clerk to become certified. She was involved in the village crier. She received her bachelor's degree in accounting while she was working and was the administrative team lead organizing all staff events. In 2015, Ms. Sager took over the village crier full-time, enhancing the publication of the vibrant color. Also during that time, she led projects for the first City Government Finance Officers Association, distinguished budget presentation award, as well as implementing electronic payments for the city. And these are, this is the budget, those that she's been involved with for many years. In June 2018, the Director of Finance Administration position became available, open, with Karen Reynolds leaving, and Jessica rose to the challenge and took on the role. She'd be working as assistant, and she moved in seamlessly and took over that position and did a great job. As finance director, she's greatly improved the operations of the city. She's, and she was responsible for helping put in streaming and video recording in the city council. And she headed up the 75th Anniversary Committee and other events, improving information IT services, and also led the staff relocation to these new facilities during after construction. Her dedication, impeccable customer service, cheerfulness, I'll add, and commitment to improving the city are unwavering. We are very grateful to her, I am personally, and we all are. Seventeen years of service and the six months' notice before. As she and her family move on to their future in Iowa. This says Iowa. Did you change? Well. Okay. All right. Other members of council, if you like to say. Counselor Blum?
I appreciate that. Jessica, let me say this, because I was put on the finance committee because I had a background in accounting back probably three, four years ago, and started working with you back, I think, three or four years ago on the budget. And never, and I've worked a lot with other accountants. I don't do any accounting anymore because I don't understand it anymore. Working with you on the budgets for the last three, four years, your attention to detail, I think, I've not seen anywhere else. And when we got into nitty-gritty of the budget and things that we'd be working on, you had an answer for everything. And I really appreciate that because I got kind of thrown into that and learned it and understood the budget thanks to your help. Not only that, I think beyond what you've done from my experience from accounting is you've gone out and planned and looked ahead and seen what other opportunities there were. And I think that's critical. You know, it's something that rarely you see from a staff member that we're looking ahead. When we came up with the idea of bonuses and sources of funds, and you were able to look for those and find those. And I think entire council really appreciated that. So let me say this. For the last three, four years, we're really going to miss you. I'm going to miss you especially, and I don't know what I'm going to do about budgets now, but I have to start all over again. But we really appreciate that. We will miss you. I want to wish you and the best, best luck. Now, if you're commuting over the river, I don't know where we're going to end up. But if you do get a chance, come back and see us because we definitely will miss you. Thank you, Jessica.
Jessica, it's, as you know, we've worked together on the crier for years now. And so at least 12 times a year, I've had the privilege of sitting with Jessica and hashing through the details on the crier. And those have been wonderful times, and I'll miss them, although I certainly enjoy working with Laura as we move forward. I was thinking about descriptives for you, and one that comes, a couple of words come to mind. One is availability. You are always accessible. We can get to you. We know you're going to respond. And you have this history of being very open in your communication. Secondly, to piggyback Al's point, your accuracy is remarkable. And we've seen that over and over, and especially you as the Director of Finance in this position is, can't say enough about it. And it's going to carry you forward very well. And finally, in this unusual world that we live in today, you carry in my mind true authenticity. And I can't say enough about you in that regard. What you see is what you get. And as my mother used to tell me, she said, "Michael, the cream always rises to the top." And Jessica, as you move forward and you leave this support system that you've had for 17 years and been a vital part of it, you will do very well. So all the best to you.
That's a great analogy, Mike, because I, what I was going to say is that I feel like you have elevated everything you have touched here, whether it is, you know, the budget, the budget award, you know, from events, the crier, everything you've touched. And you've worn many, many hats over the years. So the cream has definitely risen to the top. There will be a very big hole to fill, but I know that someone out there is going to be very lucky in getting you on their team in the future. So I too wish you the best and appreciate everything that you've done and just have enjoyed working with you. You're just a nice person.
Hi, Jessica. Well, living with a CPA at home, I know what the value of clean opinions are and what it takes to get there. And we haven't had even a small question about the quality of the accounting that's gone on. And similarly, I echo the comments about the award-winning budget presentation. I think that's very impressive. It really is. We, you do us proud. We stand in good stead with our peers and great support, you know. I don't know, 20, 30 iterations of long-term budget, different scenarios, very patient, very positive. And it was fun. It was fun working with you. I've enjoyed it. Always upbeat, always available, as Mike said and others have said. It's great. I want to wish you the best of luck and let us know if we can do anything to help.
I think the door swings both ways. If you ever have a second thoughts, I'm sure we can find a place for you back here. City manager.
This one's coming up here. This is, I can't sit there and do this. You know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier about this being a bittersweet moment, and that might be true for Jessica. But everybody needs to understand it is just a bitter moment for the rest of staff. This is, Jessica is so instrumental, and Katie started to talk about all the ways that she makes this organization so much better. You know, we're a lean staff. We take pride in that. That's not a, that's not a fault. That's a strength. We are a lean staff. And everybody wears more hats than maybe you do in some larger cities. But no one's hat rack is larger than Jessica's. I can tell you, in my time here, which is not nearly, doesn't even begin to cover the breadth of everything that she's contributed, I have seen firsthand, and she has been so instrumental in my first couple of years as city manager here. I just hope everybody understands. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. We've mentioned the GFOA awards that are consecutive years award-winning. All of the audits that have come back, every single one, and those are, you never know, right? Until you get through that process, clean bill of health every single time. I know we've talked a lot in here about our long-range financial plans and everything that that might mean going forward. This is an area where she was tireless and tried her best to try and figure out all the different ways this might go and try and look around the corner. And working with you guys, and it's a pleasure for all of us to work with you, but I want to recognize her tirelessness of making sure each one of you got exactly what you needed for that conversation. It just shows her commitment to this city. One in particular, you know, she does all of this backup work for things that aren't in her job description. Helps the city, helps the community development clerk, steps in if there's a court clerk absence. She just does it, just does it. Nobody asks. She just fills in. These are the examples. It's a perfect encapsulation of what she does and her attitude and her approach and why she's so successful. Goes without asking. She jumps in and does it. I think also, and I don't think I speak for just me, I think for a lot of staff, it's not just these work, production contributions that she brings to us. We all are going to miss everything she brings to us socially, how much she makes us laugh. Stories on Monday morning are never going to be the same. And so it's, it really is truly more than just a list of accomplishments that we're talking about. And so I know all of staff's going to have a chance to tell you how much we appreciate you. You're doing great, by the way. You're holding it together well. So, okay, all right, I will look over here. So Jessica, I just want you to know. No, this is, when Jessica told me the news, truthfully, I was devastated. I mean, it just, the idea that she wasn't going to be here from a work perspective, but also from a workplace perspective, it was tough. With that said, you know, we'll figure it out. But more importantly, I think she's going to figure it out. She's going to, she's going to go to a place where it's her next chapter. I think we're all excited for that, and I think she is too. But I have something for her. We can't go without her getting a little parting gift. So after I'm done doing this, I think she might have a few comments. And then after that, if you guys could come down for a picture, it would be appreciated. But Jessica, we do have this here for you, this lovely, yeah, come on up. This lovely decoration that I, you know, if this isn't going to go perfectly in your Illinois house, I don't know what will. All right. It says, "With deep appreciation for the distinguished and exceptional service given to the city and its residents, thank you, Jessica. Dates of employment 2015 through 2012." This is for you. Sorry, 2012?
2005.
2022. We've been getting you free for 10 years. No, honestly, thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
I'm going to try not to. I'm probably just going to read because if I do make eye contact with anybody, I might start crying. And we don't need ugly crying on camera today. So I did keep my comments brief when I wrote them. We had a full agenda. So I kept everything brief. First of all, I'd like to thank the academy. Just kidding. Thank you so much for your kind words tonight. I'd like to thank my family for their support. Unfortunately, my husband and my oldest son couldn't make it back into town. But I do have my youngest son Ethan and his girlfriend Haley in the audience tonight. So after listening to me practice my numerous budget presentations over the years, they probably know just as much about the city's budget as I do. Thank you for always being there to listen and for your encouragement. Ethan is always sure to remind me to present with enthusiasm because that's always what I tell him when he has a presentation for school. I'd also like to thank both former city manager Jim Thorson and current city manager Chris Kramer for their leadership. Without Jim, I'm not sure I would have been given the opportunity to become the city's Director of Finance, which has been one of the most challenging and rewarding positions I've had. Chris, your willingness? Don't look at me. Chris, your willingness to listen and to provide guidance in difficult situations even before you became city manager has been greatly appreciated. I also appreciate your collaborative nature that allows us to see behind the curtains of the city manager's office. Thank you so much to my fellow employees. I have inside jokes and connections with all of you. Emily, the eagle. Paul, turkey. Ethan, the weird way you spell your name. I can't adequately express how much I'm going to miss you all. To Laura and the administrative staff, I'm so sorry I'm breaking up the band. This is one of the best administrative teams we've had, but I have the utmost faith that you'll be able to carry the torch without missing a step. Doesn't mean I'll miss you any less, though. My partners in crime, Jay and Catherine. Jay, you've put up with me for a long time. Thank you so much for always listening, your friendship and advice when I needed it. I'll miss our 7:15 a.m. morning talks. Thank you for making me laugh when I need it the most, even though I'm usually the butt of your joke. Most importantly, thank you for keeping me hydrated. Catherine, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do this one. Thank you so much for your support, especially over what was one of the most difficult years of my life with this huge life choice my family made. You're one of the most dedicated, hard-working, empathetic people I have ever met, and the employees here are so lucky to have you. I'll miss everything about you, even though I know we'll talk every day. Finally, to the members of city council, Mayor Stewart, former mayor Laura Christman, and my former finance liaison, Earl Holland. Thank you all for your support, your patience, and for your enormous faith in me. Special shout out to my two liaisons, Al and Mike, for all your years of working with me specifically. And Kathy, thank you for your expertise and advice throughout my tenure. I can't put into words how difficult the decision to move has been and how much I'll miss the village. The residents and the employees mean the world to me. Everyone has told me the new Director of Finance has big shoes to fill, but to me, it's always been the city of Rock Island where I'm going will have even bigger shoes to fill. It's been my honor to be employed by the city over the last 17 years. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, next up is presentation by Excel Energy. Welcome.
That is a very tough act to follow. And so just what you, just what you want to hear from next, your local utility. So, good evening. I am Liz Gardner, and I am the new, new-ish area manager for Cherry Hills Village. So have been with, a little bit about me, I've been with Excel for about five and a half years. Before the end of 2021, when I stepped into the area manager role, I led all of the philanthropic giving for Excel here in Colorado. So our corporate foundation and employee volunteerism. I'm a mom of two little boys, ages five and two. So a human first and an Excel Energy employee second. So thank you so much for having me here tonight. Mostly wanted to have the opportunity to introduce myself, to give you a point of contact. I've obviously been working very closely with Jay and with Chris on projects happening in Cherry Hills, but wanted you to have a point of contact as well. So I'll talk very briefly, just kind of high level, some of the things that are going on at Excel. And then we'll spend a little bit of time talking specifically about projects here in Cherry Hills. You probably have seen, you may have seen this slide before, but when we think about Excel Energy and sort of all we do that guides, guides our work, how we think about how we service our customers here in Colorado and across the seven other states where we provide gas and natural gas and electric service, it's these three priorities, leading the clean energy transition, enhancing the customer experience, and keeping bills low. And there's a lot going on within each of these three categories that I won't dive into too deep tonight, but there's a couple of things that I want to touch on really quickly. First is as we think about sort of leading the clean energy transition. Excel Energy is really a, truly a nationwide leader in this space. We just reached a settlement here, I don't know, maybe two and a half weeks ago. In a final decision, we are waiting for the PUC right now on our electric resource plan that will put us by 2030 delivering 85% renewable energy to customers around Colorado. That includes the retirement of all of our coal plants in the state by 2031. If someone said 2021, they would, 2031, including, and you know, and one of the things I think about when we have reached that settlement as we think about the retirement of coal plants is how we really intentionally leave communities still whole. We are working very closely in Hayden, Colorado, and Pueblo, Colorado to ensure that there is job transition opportunities, tax-based replacement for these communities that depend so deeply on that, on that asset. But we are really proud that by 2030, 85% of our customers, sort of that baseline number, is really going to be raised even higher. We also put forth late in 2021 our net zero natural gas strategy to deliver a net zero system by 2050. So similarly mirroring our 2050 electrical to deliver a 100% carbon-free system on the electric side, by 2050, we will deliver a 100% net zero natural gas system. I think if you were to ask anybody in our company, is the gas business going away for Excel Energy? We would probably, at this point, say no, but we do know what goes through the pipes, how we manage that system, how we reduce methane capture, how we improve methane emissions from the natural gas system. That will evolve and change pretty significantly, as well as advancements in technology on the natural gas system that will allow us to hit that goal. The last one is our EV vision. So we have a goal to have 1.5 million electric vehicles on the road in our service territory. And we have rolled out a really a suite of programs for residential, commercial, multifamily to really help to incentivize and promote the use of electric vehicles. And I'll talk about a couple of those because I thought they might be particularly relevant. So on the EV, on Vision, you know, again, you can see some of the numbers up here, but a goal to have 1.5 million EVs on the road by 2030. And again, that's across, across the eight states where we operate. But we know that Colorado and Minnesota are, they're our two largest states, will certainly be the leaders in us achieving that goal. That's a $1 billion fuel savings for our customers. I bet if we calculated that number at today's gas rates, it would be, it would be even higher. And, you know, really with this goal to reduce 5 million tons of carbon emission into our environment by 2030. So what does that look like from a program perspective? I'm not going to go into all of them, but here in Colorado, we got passed by the PUC, our Transportation Electrification Plan, TEP, which is a plan, it started in 2021, our sort of first TEP, and is extended through 2024, and then we'll do another filing with the PUC. But it's about a $20 million investment in electric vehicle program. So again, it's everything from home wiring rebates, home charging services, multifamily where we can, you know, supply the infrastructure. We're actually rolling out a pilot, or kind of a pilot, a small sort of rollout, where Excel Energy now has the ability to own public charging infrastructure. But that, so we will install fast chargers, and we can do it in municipalities. We can do it at commercial buildings to own the, sort of the infrastructure for fast charging ports. We have advisory services, so looking at, we're working with a lot of municipalities right now on their electrification plans for their fleets. I would say this is probably one of the fastest-growing areas for Excel Energy's business as far as even staff capacity as we think about how do we really roll out and provide advisory services for commercial, residential, and municipal partners. So a lot of exciting stuff happening in the EV space. during off-peak times, and I'll talk a little bit about those time-of-use rates. So, customers here in Cherry Hills, many of you probably have already gotten your smart meter. It largely happened in Q1 of this year, probably rolling in a little bit into Q2 as well of this year. And again, it will improve our response outage time, allow for different customer incentives and benefits with, you know, this communication. It'll give you a lot more visibility into your energy usage, to the point where customers will start getting, we're changing the bill, so I call it like the bill of shame, we get it at our house where they say we use way more energy than our next-door neighbor. It'll really allow much more hyper, sort of defined data on that bill. So, you can see here that I just touched on this, kind of the roll, the deployment map. We started rolling them out in 2021, largely in Denver, and then sort of through Q4 this year, we'll hit the vast majority of the rest of the metro, the metro area. So, with that, so customers that received their smart meter in 2021, starting April 1st, automatically, I should say, let me just back up on smart meters, customers can opt out of getting a smart meter. There is a fee associated with opting out of getting a smart meter, because we still have to have meter readers go out then and manually read people's meters. And so, that's why there is that monthly fee if you opt out. These time-of-use rates, customers are automatically opted into them, so if you got your smart meter in 2021, you started. So, my family, we started on time-of-use rates April 1st, but then anybody that's getting theirs in 2022, it'll start October 1st. And so, when I think about time-of-use rates, it really is about how do we start to put our customers in the driver's seat when it comes to their energy usage? Right now, as we are trying to balance our grid with much more renewable energy, we have to build infrastructure to the six o'clock hour on the hottest day in the summer when everyone's pumping all of their equipment. And we really need to, in order to not overbuild, we need to start to flatten that bell curve. We can't be building for this. We've got to start to incentivize and motivate customers to help us manage our peak demand. And so, these new time-of-use rates, you can see, and I know the graphics a little blurry, and I can send you the actual, make sure the staff has kind of the actual PDF with all of this on there. But you can see there's basically summer rates and winter rates, and off-peak times and on-peak times. Customers, we did a pretty extensive pilot, customers that made very small behavior modifications, things like, don't run your dishwasher at 6:00 p.m. Use, most of us now have a setting on our dishwasher where you can, you know, time it to go five hours later, do that. Don't run your washer, your dryer. Use your Nest or your smart thermostats to bring the temperature in your house up just a few degrees during the summer versus keeping it at, you know, whatever, 68 degrees in your house on the hottest day, bring it up to 72 degrees. Small behavioral changes, most customers, because of the way it's sort of offset, wouldn't see an increase in their bill. I would say for customers, if they don't make any behavior modifications, if they are pumping that AC, they're running their dishwasher, they're running all the things at 6:00 p.m., with this time-of-use rate, they would see an increase in their bill. Customers can opt out of the time-of-use rate and just stay on a flat rate, sort of a 24/7 flat rate. What sort of I'm encouraging people to do is try it. You can try it, and you can opt out if you're like, this is terrible, you know, my rates are going way up on this. You can opt out, but I look forward to, you know, working in partnership with our cities on the communication side of things. This is new for us, and so figuring out how we continue to communicate with customers, inform customers, and really, I think the visibility into people's bills, like they'll start to even change things, like with our Excel Energy app, we just had a meeting the other day, you know, you'll start to get, like almost push notifications to say, hey, I noticed, you know, you used way more energy, you know, yesterday than you did the day before, like what did you do differently? Think, you know, to think differently. So, we're going to change the way we communicate with our customers as, you know, as we roll this out, and we look forward to working with our municipal partners on that, because it's a change, it's a shift for sure, and, you know, change can be scary, but I think it's also a really great opportunity to put customers kind of in the driver's seat of their energy usage. And then, so kind of going into more Cherry Hills-specific projects. So, I started in this job, I think in December or November, and I am working very closely with Jade to get the Quincy 1% project to the finish line. I will be the first to admit, this has not been a smooth project. I know it has been a challenge, and, you know, there are lessons learned in, you know, my five months coming in from the Excel side of things, that I have a commitment to you all that we will bring those into future projects with the city to ensure that we don't run into the same problems that have happened with this one. But we are close, we are working really close, we've got a little bit of telecom still on a few of those poles. Once Zayo's off, which should be here very, very soon, I didn't drive it this, I haven't driven it yet this week, but I'm assuming they'll be off soon, and we'll remove those final poles and then wrap up all of that restoration work. We do have a little bit of work to remove, there's kind of one final pole that we have to do some work on, right at the intersection of Holly and Quincy, that will get done by the end of the June, and then we'll kind of close up and button up that project. We have a gas project happening right now that should conclude around June 10th, also at that same intersection. It seems to be our favorite intersection in Cherry Hills to work at, where we're replacing a 20-inch gas valve. Mears is our contractor on that project. Things, you know, kicked off and should be wrapped up relatively quickly on that one. We are also about to kick off a local improvement district project, or a general improvement district project for the Southmore Circle undergrounding. It's a roughly 15-week project timeline that will kick off May 23rd. Hooper is the contractor on that. And I would say that one, you know, me coming in, sort of working with the team from the start on that, the kind of the design, the scope, the process, there's a lot of things, again, lessons learned from the Quincy 1% that we're implementing there. Things like a robust communication plan. We've got set up biweekly project team calls. I've been on every one of the field walks for that project so that we can really ensure there's that, you know, that hand-in-hand service that we're providing to the community to ensure that we don't run into any of the challenges that we had before. And then the last thing I would say, I know vegetation management, tree trimming is always a topic of conversation right now. There is no planned vegetation management work in the city for 2022. It's not planned in our book. Every once in a while, you know, maybe something comes up, but as of right now, there's nothing planned, and certainly I would communicate with you if there were, if there was. You know, the last thing I would just say, this is my email, my cellphone, you know, for me, the sort of transparency, responsiveness, and collaboration, I would say are kind of foundational to who I am, what I hope to bring to the city, and I look forward to working with you all for many months and years to come. So, that is all I have. I don't know if you want questions.
Thank you very much. We might have some questions. Counselor Blum?
I have no questions. I really appreciate coming here tonight. On behalf of my wingman, Dan, who's not here, once Quincy 1% is done, Jay will sleep better at night, he will sleep better also. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Me too.
Counselor Gallagher? Counselor Will?
Thanks. Yeah, great presentation. Thank you very much for the time. And honestly, as a consumer, I learned a lot, so I appreciate your efforts to communicate and to bring a better understanding of Excel and rates and all that to us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on natural gas that you started with. I had heard, and may or may not, that the PUC was not entertaining any, would not approve Excel's expenditures for natural gas capital improvement projects past like 2030, 2035? Is that right?
You know, I have not heard anything definitive on that. Where we are, and we have not heard, there, it has not been settled yet, I guess would be the appropriate word. The PUC did put forth a rulemaking to remove the line extension. So, right now, developers receive a 28% construction allowance on the line extension, so from the pipe to their building for the kind of a construction allowance. The PUC has proposed to remove that line extension allowance for any new installation. We have worked really hard to make sure the, you know, municipalities, developers especially, that their voice has been heard before the PUC, and we're still awaiting a decision on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you for coming today. We appreciate, that is very helpful information.
Great. Thank you all. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Thanks.
Next, we have audience participation. And we have one sent up. Howard Shear. Good to see you.
Oh, it is good. Thank you. You do remember me. They still didn't fix that. But I'm Howard Shear. I live at 210 Summit Boulevard. I don't know where the Boulevard came from, but that's where I lived for the last 42 years. And I'm here because I'm frustrated, and I'm frustrated because I can't get an answer to a simple question, and I thought I'd come to the lion's den for a final answer, and that is, you're all aware that we're in an extreme fire danger. You also are quite aware of the Marshall Fire, and you're probably aware that a number of our residents like to burn wood in their open fire pits, and that's where the problem comes up. The question is, Arapahoe County has implemented a Phase II fire ban, and without going into the details, because I don't understand all of it either, but they are implementing this, and the question that I can't get an answer to, and I hope you can answer for me, is are we following Arapahoe County's implementation, or do we have some other process that we're, that I'm unaware of? That's the question.
Thanks for the question, and we'll get back to you. And we'll have, so you managed to look into it and get back to you. I will add that we have had discussions and concern from residents about the fire in Boulder, Superior, and I think we'd like to have South Metro come in and give us some information too. So, watch for that on the agenda.
How will I get? Well, we, there's a number of ramifications of the answer to that question, and I'm not going to take your time to explain it to you, but it really needs to be answered and promulgated amongst the community, including the Fire Department, the Police Department, who are giving contradictory answers along the way.
Appreciate that. Your comments this evening, we'll get back to you.
Just want to clarify for you, Mr. Mayor, the South Metro is coming in to do a presentation regarding community-wide fire prevention efforts on June 7th.
I don't want to wait until June 7th.
Well, we'll get back to you on your question. You bet. Thank you, Howard. Anyone else? Would you speak? Going, going, gone. We moved to the consent agenda, item seven.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Next, Council Bill 10, Series 2022, Amending Chapter 18 of the Municipal Code Regarding Federal Holidays and Construction Activity. This is our second and final reading, and we have our Community Development Clerk, Paul Westbrook. Ethan, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for having me, Mayor and City Council members. I promise I don't have any history lessons tonight, and I'll keep this rather brief. Once again, thank you very much for having me to discuss the Chapter 18, Construction Holidays Code Amendment, this evening. Before you, you see the proposed code language in red. Since the May 3 city council meeting where city council approved the first reading of the code amendment, no changes have been made to Bill 10, Series 2022. Due to no changes being made, before you is the recommended motion for the second and final reading approval if council so chooses. Pretty quick presentation, but I would like to open it for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Westbrook?
I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill 10, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending, you just moved the screen, amending Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code Regarding Federal Holidays and Construction Activity Within Cherry Hills Village.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes unanimously again. Move on to item 9C, Council Bill 11, Series 2022, Amending Section 16, 320 of Article 3 of Chapter 16 of the Municipal Code Concerning Recreational Structure Setbacks in the O1 Open Space Park and Recreation Area Zone District. This is our second and final reading, and this is Mr. Orkman.
Based on the conversation with Counselor Will, would you like to read the motion for continuance?
I think what you've...
What's that?
Yep. We've had here, motion to continue this matter, or we're anticipating a motion to continue this matter for a little time.
(laughing)
We could just use a motion that you moved to continue that item to the June 7, 2022 city council date.
I move to continue this item until the June 7 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I think this is for, among other things, we'll have a full board here, more members to discuss this, which I think is important. That would be good. No more discussion, this is voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously as well. Last one is, last item of unfinished business is 9D, Council Bill 12, Series 2022, Amending Section 2120 of the Municipal Code Concerning Designation Description of Ethan, I'm sorry, sorry.
Well, thank you very much for having me, Mayor and City Council members, I promise I don't have any history lessons tonight, and I'll keep this rather brief. Um, once again, thank you very much for having me to discuss the Chapter eighteen construction holidays code amendment this evening. Before you, you see the proposed code language in red, um, since the May third city council meeting, where city council approved the first reading of the code amendment, no changes have been made to Bill Ten, Series two thousand twenty-two. Due to no changes being made, before you is the recommended motion for the second and final reading approval, if council so chooses. Pretty quick presentation, but I would like to open it for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Westbrook?
I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill Ten, Series two thousand twenty-two, a bill for an ordinance amending, you just moved the screen, amending Article eleven of Chapter eighteen of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code regarding federal holidays and construction activity within Cherry Hills Village.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes unanimously again. Move on to item nine C, Council Bill eleven, Series twenty-two, amending Section sixteen three twenty of Article three of Chapter sixteen of the municipal code concerning recreational structure setbacks in the O-one Open Space Park and Recreation Area Zone District, this is our second and final reading, and this is, Mr. Workman?
Yeah, based on the, the conversation with, uh, Counselor Will, would you like to read the motion for continuance?
I think what you've.
What's that?
Yeah, we've had here, motion for, to continue this matter, or we're anticipating a motion to continue this matter for a little time.
We, we could just use a, a motion that you move to continue that, that item to the June seventh, twenty-twenty-two city council date.
I move to continue this item until the June seventh, uh, city council meeting.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? And I think, and this is for, among other things, we'll have a full board here, more members to discuss this, which I think is important, that would be good. No more discussion, this is, uh, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously as well. Last one is, uh, last item of unfinished business is nine D, Council Bill twelve, Series two thousand twenty-two, amending Section two one twenty of the municipal code concerning designation description of city council districts, this is our second and final reading, again, Planning Manager Workman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, um, like, uh, my colleague, uh, Ethan's presentation, this one will be relatively short, since we've talked about it, seems like, uh, at the last three council meetings, uh, but this is a council bill to, um, to, uh, amend some of the council districts, as well as allow for language in the code that would reference a map as opposed to legally describe every council district. So if you recall, it's a study session in April, uh, council directed staff to bring forward an amendment to the boundaries between Districts Three and District Five. This amendment would shift the westernmost shared, uh, boundary between the two districts to the east to align with Holly Street, and this change was approved by council on first reading, uh, at our, at our meeting in, a couple weeks ago. By approving this, uh, council bill, the new council district boundaries are shown on this map, reflective of the option that council directed us to move forward with, and again, uh, there would be, uh, uh, language in the code that would be changed just to reference, uh, this, this map here, as opposed to the description of each council district. And with that, the recommended motion is before you, and I will leave it up as long as you all desire.
I move to appro, I'm gonna use my paper this time. I move to approve Council Bill twelve, Series two thousand twenty-two, on second and final reading, a bill for an ordinance amending Section two dash one dash twenty of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning designation and description of city council districts as referred to as Option Two, and shown in Exhibit G to the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two staff memo.
Second.
A motion second, any further discussion? I think we've actually worked, good ju, good work on this, I think it came out to a good resolution, and, um, wasn't a huge lift, but it was interesting, nevertheless.
I will say it was a very interesting exercise.
Okay, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our, our business session of the meeting tonight, I'll move on quickly to reports, because I do understand that, from Counselor Blum, that there's another hockey game tonight. So, um, just, um, briefly, I, I report, um, on May eleventh, I attended Mayor's lunch, Sheridan hosted, Littleton, Greenwood Village, the mayors were there, um, there's a good set of mayors now, good conversations. On May twelfth, I attended the, um, State of Centennial presentation, Arapahoe County Airport, it was, it was at a hangar out there, and it was five hundred, at least five hundred people, Mayor Pico, um, gave a great report, it was quite, quite a polished presentation, interesting. Um, it is a hundred, you know, Centennial is more than a hundred thousand, a hundred ten thousand people, I think, and, and a lot of business and a lot of, a lot is going on there. Coming up next, I think we have a Arapahoe County Transportation Forum Executive Committee meeting, um, that's the nineteenth, um, city manager and I have Arapahoe County Mayor's Managers Commissioners Meeting, uh, breakfast meeting on the twentieth, and on the twenty-fourth, uh, I'll be, uh, doing site visits for the Arapahoe County Open Space and Trail Advisory Board, uh, and that is my report. Counselor Blum?
No report.
No report. I actually have a report.
Good.
Uh, this is, this is sort of transportation week, I was at the, uh, at the Regional Transportation Committee meeting this morning, Dr. Cog Board of Meeting, Board of Directors meeting tomorrow night, and, and then we have the Arapahoe County, uh, meeting on Thursday. Some of the bigger things that are happening, um, just awarded the Call One awards for, um, uh, transportation projects, we worked through prioritizing and voting on that, um, and there's a Call Two, the, the Call One was more about, uh, multimodal and greenhouse gas mitigation, uh, the Call Two is, is a more general call and much bigger, uh, funds, and that's, I think in October, it's an October deadline for, for project submissions. Couple of info presentations, uh, one particularly on greenhouse gas that was, uh, was interesting and a little concerning, um, if you look at all the models and, and, uh, forecast out in the future to twenty-fifty, we don't meet the greenhouse gas objectives, and that impairs federal funding if we don't meet them, so it's fairly serious business, um, and more to, more will be needed for us to, um, to, to make those. There was another informational presentation, which was interesting as well, um, there's an operations and technology, uh, uh, organization that's, that's within Dr. Cog, and they're working on a strategic plan, which really starts to do a better job of pulling together, uh, everything from traffic signaling to, uh, all kinds of, uh, multi, multimodal and, and other, uh, initiatives to create a more coherent regional plan and a more efficient movement of traffic along the, uh, along the way. So much for transportation, the, we had a, uh, first meeting on our, well, I met with Chris, actually, and the consultant, on our ballot initiative, um, and it, I'd say we're at sort of the orientation stage, Laura was generous and gave me lots of reading, uh, on, uh, committees and how you form them, what you have to keep track of, and dates and so on, uh, which was good, we're assembling members, and I want to thank you, Mike, for super effort in pulling together, um, several volunteers, which I think will be great, um, and so that, that's starting to, to make some progress, we're working on timelines and kind of starting to get ourselves, uh, organized for that. Uh, and that is about all I have, thank you.
City Manager?
I will let the directors provide any reports that they might have.
I would just like to thank you guys again for your kind words, we did receive the, um, final audit from the auditor yesterday, so it's another clean audit, I'll write up the manager's report for that before I go, and then your new director of finance will add that to one of the upcoming agendas in June, so.
I, I just want to note for the record, uh, this being Jessica's last council meeting, I find it just highly suspicious that on the same day, we get a clean bill of health on the audit, and you receive in front of you the final budget, I mean, it's just, the bow is too perfectly tied, if you ask me, I mean.
That's just how good I am, right?
Good evening, we're at the PD or getting ready, I've been cracking the whip for the last couple of weeks with the, uh, new chief that starts on Monday, we're all looking forward to that, and, uh, getting ready for that, and it's very exciting for us, so, uh, we'll, we'll be ready Monday, thank you.
Uh, two brief updates related to the master plan, uh, last week, we had the fifth, um, Citizen Advisory Task Force meeting, uh, where we started to talk about some, some draft skeletal structure and language to the document, and it was a, it was a fantastic meeting, and we got some really good feedback from that group, and so, uh, we're very pleased with where we're at. Um, also, last week, um, uh, we gave a presentation to the PTRC about the status of the, the master plan and kind of what we saw from the second round of the community survey, so that's it for me.
I do just want to apologize for taking that recommended motion down.
Um, the two eighty-five safety enhancement, uh, study that we are doing with Inglewood and Sheridan in Denver, uh, we are meeting again this week on that, we're starting to make some progress, starting to get some data in, um, so we will continue to, um, massage that and look at that, and there will be some public input meetings on that, so, uh, look for those, and I'll make sure that, uh, we get that information to everybody. Continue to work on all of our undergrounding, um, we did, uh, put out notification to all of the residents in the area of the undergrounding, uh, we have walked the site a few times with Excel and Comcast, um, we're doing everything we can to, uh, make sure that this goes a lot smoother than our current project, so, uh, we'll continue to, uh, make sure that, uh, we keep on top of that.
Let me just edit what Jay just said, we're gonna try and do what we can to ensure that Excel handles this better than the last time. We're gonna, I think Liz is trying to make a commitment to be more of a watchdog on her own teams, but just, I think we have better clues to look for as we try and be a watchdog on her and her team as well, so, um, probably can't go worse, right, so.
I just want to ask everybody to keep your packet materials for three, the items that were continued tonight, um, or you can hand them back to me either way.
Uh, just a couple of quick items, um, regarding sales tax, the sales tax issue, uh, I do want to thank council's efforts, uh, we, we, to Randy, Randy's point, I think we did make a, a lot of progress, um, regarding the co-chair, um, and there are some initial P and Z, PTRC, um, uh, and some HOA meetings that have already been scheduled, so, uh, look out for those. In front of you is the, uh, a little pamphlet from the High Line Conservancy regarding, uh, sponsorship opportunities for the dine for the High Line event that's going to be occurring, um, I can tell you that, um, we, it has been requested of us, now, let's see, I can't find it, there it is, okay, Ethan, did you take this paperwork for me as well? No, okay. Uh, Harry LaMaire has asked that, uh, the city consider joining other, uh, uh, members of the collaborative, uh, to sponsor, uh, this event, um, at the Wild Canyon level, uh, which is twenty-five hundred dollars. The first one was in twenty-eighteen, had over three hundred attendees, uh, sold out, um, and so obviously, I think they took a couple of year break, but they're excited to get it going back again, it's Friday, September sixteenth, at their new home over there on Orchard and Little Dry Creek, um, so you can see from there, a lot of the information and what's gonna be occurring, so, um, I guess I would, I would ask, it could either be tonight, offline, one-on-one, or to, soon, if council, what your interest is in doing a, a sponsorship at the requested level, or any other level that you might consider.
Is the, do you know if the only way to attend is through sponsorship, or will they sell tickets?
I, I believe if you get asked to join somebody else's table who sponsored, that would be a possibility.
I mean, the only one that comes with a table, and it's not even, depending on how big the tables are, is forty thousand dollars, that's why I'm asking, you know?
Yeah, no, I think if we sponsored at this level, we would get some seats.
We'd get two.
But we, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, but, but yeah, if people wanted to go beyond our allocated two, well, I've seen it work a lot of ways, I guess we'd have to look, try and reach out to them specifically on this, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's not clear from.
Yeah, we need, we might need to look at, revisit our policy too, on contributions to nonprofits.
Well, so, you know, I've talked a little bit with Laura, just a little bit about, you know, council's general historical, uh, contribution history, if you will, um, you know, I know the South Metro Chamber has approached us recently about participating, some of them might have more value and more benefit to the community than others, but I certainly, in my opinion, they, they're worthy of at least a, a mechanism for council to consider them, so, it's just worthy of.
Yeah, they're clearly worthy, I'm just, want to make sure that we check the wording of our policy, because I remember we, we had faced this earlier.
Exactly, I think that's correct.
City, uh, any other city attorney, any, any comments? Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a second, there's clearly nobody, nobody opposed to that, so, everybody can go.